I am Colin. This meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you all and welcome. Counselor Amen Smith will not be with us tonight. The first item on the agenda that needs attention is Proclamations. And since we have three proclamations, I'm going to just come down to the podium and then ask each group to come up whenever it's your turn. We would like to recognize this with a proclamation. Mr. Ronald Toyota, would you come up and whoever else you have with you for this proclamation?
She's part of the committee. Matter of fact, she's the one that's...
Yeah, let's have everybody that deserves recognition come out. Whereas, Western New Mexico University's Cultural Affairs Office is planning for the first time, a weekend event filled with family fun and a Latin twist. And whereas, WNU will be a host for the Latin cultures, rhythms, flavors, artisan crafts, and tequila tasting, all located on campus. Whereas, the weekend kicks off at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, June 16th, with a sneak preview and opening reception. Tickets to the reception will include a cash bar, light snacks, and performance by Barak Ubatanga. And whereas, headliner for the event, Silver City native Tobias Renee, will be performing his New Mexico Tex-Mex style of music on Saturday, June 17th. And whereas, Fiesta Latina will be family oriented, with children activities and well-rounded events for everyone. For a schedule of events, please visit www.tiestalatina.org. Now therefore, I can ladder, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, hereby proclaim June 16th through June 18th, 2017, as Fiesta Latina Days. And would you like to say something?
I would like to say... Okay. Do you have a speech message or whatever? Excuse me? No, it's okay. No, I would just like to say a few words that we've had this committee put together, and it has been such a well-put committee, thanks to Fay. She's actually the one that created the Blues Festival, so I got a really candid to her that she really put us together to run this wonderful Fiesta. It's the first annual, so we're going to see how things go. And I would just like to explain something, that there's going to be over 26 artisans from Mexico. And thanks to Lisa, she's the one that's actually going to bring them up with their, what they're actually going to sell. On Saturday for evening, when Tobias Renee is going to be there, please, you know, if you guys want to bring him lunches, it's going to be outside, okay? Due to the fact that it's going to actually be an outside concert, let me tell you that we're going to have a lot of food events. We have a lot of events for the kids, workshops, it's going to be a great treat date. And the neatest thing about it is, is we're going to have a watch-up tournament on Sunday for Father's Day, so go bear up, shine your watches, and it's going to be a grueling watch-up tournament, because, let me tell you, they're going to come on, and it's going to be a wonderful time. Thank you Fay for everything that you have done, you have been such an exceptional human being, not only with me, but also in this community. Deanna for promoting it on the world radio station, and Lisa for bringing all this together with the artisans. Thank you very much, and I hope to see everybody there. Thank you very much.
Coach Truett, would you and your group please come forward? We're glad you all could join us tonight. Proclamation read. Whereas, the Silver High Lady Coats softball team won the 2017 state championship. And whereas, this championship marks the Lady Coats' seventh consecutive state championship, and their 11th year as state champions for the program. Whereas, it is fitting that we recognize not only their hard work, but their ability to set goals as a team and individually, and to play with respect. And whereas, the players work together in an atmosphere of wholesome activity to provide valuable training, to learn the basic ideals of fair play and good sportsmanship. And whereas, the Town of Silver City is proud of the record the Silver City Lady Coats softball team have earned, and the recognition they have brought to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. And whereas, the Silver High Lady Coats softball team is coached by Dwayne Truett, with assistant from Michael Lopez, Larry Plonco, and Jason Sanchez. And whereas, the town urges all citizens to be cognizant of the importance of organized sports in the development of our most valuable assets, our youth. Now therefore, I can ladder, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, and on behalf of the Town Council, extend congratulations and recognitions to the recognition to the Silver High Lady Coats softball team, and do hereby proclaim the week of June 18th through 24th, 2017, as Silver High Lady Coats Softball Team Week. And urge all of Silver City's citizens to applaud and support our Lady Coats softball team for their outstanding athletic accomplishments and exemplary sportsmanship. Would you like to present this to Coach Truett?
Thank you, Coach. Thank you for presenting.
Coach, would you like to say a few words and introduce any of your team members? And Coach, would you...
Yes, sir. On behalf of Silver High Lady Coats softball, I would like to accept this proclamation and thank Mayor Ken Laddner and all the people here. Thank you so much. I'm going to introduce the ladies. On the far left over here, I've got Alex Rios. I've got Nisi Oliveira. Step forward, girls, so we can know who you are. There we go. She don't want to stand, let me see. Okay. As I introduce these ladies, I'm not going to give you the positions that they play, but I am going to specifically tell you a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we had. Our catcher, go ahead and step forward, young lady. This young lady caught every game in the state tournament, knowing that she did an outstanding job. And also, our pitcher, Cameron, will you step over there with her, please? Thank you. And our... I'm kind of nervous, guys. I don't know if you know, but this is hard. Okay. Daisy Morales, will you step forward, please? Terrell Rodriguez, Alyssa Sobloski, Howie Diskes, that's her nickname, it's really Howie. Cheyenne Aguirre, Kiana Mendoza, Madison Maddie, Coach Jason Sanchez, and Coach Hilario Olango.
Coach, did you just many consecutive championships and state records or anything?
Not yet. The state record is actually nine.
Oh, okay.
So, we're still chasing.
In two years, we'll see you again.
I hope it'll play good.
Mrs. Miller, would you bring her...
Do you want to listen, or is it... Whereas, the Town of Silver City is incorporated to provide public services and opportunities for cultural enrichment to the community. And whereas, the town's effectiveness in the provision of these services and opportunities is often dependent upon the independent regional efforts of the local citizenry. And whereas, Steering Committee for the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, SWFW, with the authority of the Town of Silver City's mayor and Town Council, has initiated and completed a search for the Silver City area's third official poet laureate. And whereas, that search has been completed, resulting in the selection of two excellent candidates to share the honorary post of Silver City poet laureate. Now therefore, on behalf of Town of Silver City, Mayor Ken Laddner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City of Grand County, New Mexico, hereby formally acknowledge, endorse, and proclaim, State for Secondhand, Beata's Secret Daughter, and William Jack Crocker, as the Silver City area's third poet's laureate.
I don't know if you have one.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Mrs. Miller, would you or anyone else like to say a few words?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Janie Miller. I'm the co-chair of the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, which is going to happen this coming September, then September 29th through October 1st. So we hope you'll all come, it's our third one. And these two wonderful people are going to be our third poets laureate that's going to be chair this year. And this is a post that the Steering Committee, way back when we decided to start the festival, felt was really necessary, and would help the community. And it has proved to be just that. Our poets laureates before have gone into the schools, done tremendous work in the schools, and in the public, and do readings. If anybody needs somebody to read a poem, get in touch with these guys. So I would like to introduce each of them, and they're going to each read a very short poem. And as we'll launch them both onto their two-year...
Ten-year?
I don't know. Aside, whatever. That's a poet's laureate. Beata, you want to start?
Everybody knows that Silver City is just brimming with artistic talent and all kinds of genres, and I am just extremely honored to be, to have the opportunity to be part of all of this. I want to thank the Southwest Festival of the Written Word and the poet laureate committee for keeping the word part of our artistic endeavors well and alive. And I also want to thank the city, the Town of Silver City, for giving me the chance, giving us the chance to be part of all this. I have a very short poem, and I know that you have other things on your agenda here. It's called "From This Cauldron." From this cauldron of conflict, you believe you have not chosen. You unfold with southern wings of tenderness.
I would also like to thank Mayor Laddner and the council members for having us and giving the proclamation. Special congratulations to softball team. I went through college on basketball and baseball scholarships, and my arm still hurts in the spring, no picture. And I'll read a poem all the time, which I think that poetry is somehow beyond us in heavy. I do have a good many depressing poems in this book, but I thought I'd read one today that's a little lighter. I wrote it when I was in university in Lubbock, Texas. In the middle of October, there was snow, and it surprised everybody. It was my birthday, and I was having a midlife crisis, and so the poem came out of that. It's entitled "The Older You Get, The More You Appreciate Heat." Titled better than the poem, probably. It kicked off sometime Saturday night, surprising the hell out of us in October, hushing up everything so I swear you could hear a rope spit. Lord, the world was white. I told the wife, "We'll have to turn up the heat and put on the soup, for as colder as the man says and the polar bear's ass." She said, "Come look, the fence poster like candles stuck in a birthday cake."
The next item on the agenda is public input, and we have none at this point. The next item on the agenda then is council comments. Counselor Connel?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have to announce is that I will be, next week I will be attending the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Annual Conference in Dallas, Texas. I'm looking forward to learning a lot of things that I can bring back this year. The focus is on rural communities and also working with state budgets, so it's a pretty good time to go and learn some new things. Thank you to Mr. Brown for supporting me going to that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Morey?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a real quick question for, for Mr. Brown here. Is it possible, Mr. Brown, that you can put on the website for the Town of Silver City, on the usage of Goth Park?
Yes, we're working on written policy for the use of, especially tents. It comes up once a year, but we're going to have the written policy posted on the website here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. And another thing also, with the hot weather that's been from the corners already, there's a lot of people driving and walking. Be courteous, both walking and driving. And I will not be here on the next town council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel Morey. Counselor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment how I enjoyed the Blues Festival this year. It was really quite wonderful. I wish I could have attended both days, and the rodeo was quite a bit of fun as well. I know there are lots of other activities that occurred in between time, couldn't go to everything, but Silver City certainly has a number of things that one can do, and it's never a boring place to be. So I just want to thank everyone that helped to put all the events on in the last several weeks that we haven't had council meetings, and all those volunteers, every time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Madison. And I would like to echo Counselor Madison's appreciation to all of the volunteers in Silver City. I always say this, but it's very, very true. The thing that makes Silver City the great community it is, is all the volunteers who spend literally thousands of hours making so many events successful. Are there any other comments from the council? I did have a couple of comments. I would like to welcome Lieutenant Cusson, is that how you pronounce it, here tonight, from the Silver City Police Department. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Good man, he's cruising.
The other item I wanted to address was, when I was running for mayor, one of the things that I said that I thought we needed was, "Welcome to Silver City" signs. Tourism is one of the big economic drivers in our community, and we spend quite a bit of money every year inviting people from all over the country, all over the world, to visit Silver City. And think of it this way, when you invite someone to your home, they knock on the door, you open the door, you welcome them to your home, you invite them inside, you show them around your home, your home is clean and beautiful, because that reflects on you. And I see "Welcome to Silver City" signs in the same way. When people come to Silver City, they need to see that sign that makes them feel welcome. Now, the council and I, we started off looking at this earlier in the year, and we even had people submit designs. But the problem was that right about that time is when the state legislature started talking about big cuts, and we even feared for the loss of our hold homeless fund, which is a very important source of our funds. So at that point, we just put that on the back burner, it just wasn't appropriate to keep going with that. I had a conversation with Mr. Brown the other day, and he said it's time to go forward with it. So, next council meeting, the Assistant Town Manager, James Marshall, will be making a presentation on how this will work, how we will solicit designs, and how those designs will be judged, and more will be coming from him at that time, as we take the first step in this process. So, I'm really excited about that part of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda? The next item on the agenda, item seven, is the approval of minutes of the May 23rd, 2017, regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Madison?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of May 23rd, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, may? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, counsel, as you all know, we, I appointed a new fire chief about five, six weeks ago, but because of conflicting schedules, he went on vacation, I went on vacation, and those types of things, I wasn't able to present him and introduce Milo Lambert, our new fire chief. So would you want to come up and say a few words? He was our fire marshal for many years, and he's been promoted to fire chief.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to first say...
Yeah, it's on.
I'd like to first say thank you, Alex, for placing your trust in me in this position. And the appointment to this position isn't so much about me as it is providing the most efficient, safest, effective, and proactive fire suppression, prevention, and emergency medical services to the Town of Silver City. So, I appreciate the trust that you placed in me in giving that back to our community. Thank you very much, Mayor Laddner and council.
Anything else, Mr. Brown, right now?
Uh, no.
Okay. Next, we have the report of the Give Grandly 2017 Results and Liveberry Foundation Grants 2017 in Grant County. Peggy Hutchinson, you're giving the report, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, council, for allowing us to come. Barrett Brewer, who's the chair of the Grant County Community Foundation Board, was supposed to be here to give you this report. Unfortunately, her mother had need of her, and we all go when mom calls, so she couldn't be here today. The Grant County Community Foundation is dedicated to increasing the awareness of philanthropy in the county. And in today's world where public funds are disappearing rapidly, community foundations are starting to be recognized in almost all rural areas as the way that communities are able to fund the things that are important to communities and help them be sustainable. One of the things that we've been doing for the last four years is sponsoring and pulling together all the local nonprofits for a day of giving. This year, it was on May 6th, and we raised $116,000, which brings our total to the local nonprofits over the four years we've been doing it of $368,000. That money is not necessarily new money, but it's money that we help by having an overarching advertising that we do, and help coordinate. The town has always been very generous with this as well, giving us the canopies and helping us with road closures. On the new money front, we were contacted this year, there was a family foundation from northern New Mexico that wanted to start making inroads in rural areas in the southern part of the state, and how they decided to approach it was by contacting community foundations. And because Grant County has a community foundation, we got the call. And as a result of the call, Barrett was able to find eight of our local nonprofits that fall within the giving range, and so Limeberry ended up contributing $200,000 to eight local nonprofits, which is absolutely fantastic. So between the two events, the Grant County Community Foundation was able to bring in over $300,000 to local nonprofits. What we have coming up this year, because we're also an advocate and supporter of our local nonprofits, we have a town hall at WNU in November. We're going to be inviting funders from all over the state. We're going to bring in bigger funders, funders that tend to not want to come into rural areas, and we're going to be having them hook up with the local nonprofits and see if we can't get Kellogg and some of the other big ones to come down and help us. And then, one of the other things we're doing is working with Alex. Thank you. We want to have a nonprofit incubator, and we're talking about maybe some office space, working with the town again. So thank you for allowing me to give you this report.
Thank you, and council, I have any questions? Counselor Madison? Counselor Madison?
I wish I was able to have been there when you had everybody out in the park and everything. This is absolutely impressive, what's been brought in this year, a significant amount over last year.
Each year, we were up this year 14% from last year. Like I said, over the four years, it's a total of $368,000. Next year, our fifth year, we're going to shoot for raising our overall total to $500,000. We think $500,000 in five years is good. And we're really excited about the town hall and getting big funders to come down here and see, because the tendency is for them to look at it and say, "Well, we can only affect the lives of, you know, 500 people if we come there. If we go to Chicago, we can affect, you know, 20,000." Well, but the point is, you can make a difference in 500 people's lives for the rest of their lives here. So we're really excited. So thank you, Counselor Madison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Brown, do you have any other staff reports?
Uh, no, nothing.
Okay. Next on the agenda, item nine, is public hearing. We will be considering the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1258, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for several tracts of land from a commercial district to the residential A single-family district described as a 4.343 acre tract of land being situated in the southeast one-fourth, southeast one-fourth of section 26, T-17S, comma, R-14W, comma, NMPM, comma, Grant County, New Mexico. The applicant is the Turkey Creek LLC. The hearing will be conducted as follows. For those of you who haven't been to a hearing, there's a certain format we have to follow. So if you bear with me, I'll go through that before we start. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as Mayor, will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witness shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had any exporté discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communication from any party to this case? Let the record show that all the councilors indicated they had not. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members, for questioning, please rise to be sworn in by the town clerk, Ann Mackey. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing. Ms. Mackey?
I state your name.
I am Linda Ralph.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
that the testimony I am about to give
That the testimony I am about to give.
in the matter before this council
In the matter before this council.
is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth
The truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Whenever anyone speaks from the podium, please speak into the mic. I appreciate that. Who will be representing, and also, please identify yourself and what role you have in the hearing. Who will be representing the applicant?
That would be me. My name is Linda Ralph. I am the Realtor for Turkey Creek, and they live in Prescott, or Placada. And so, they wish to change it in order to sell the property.
Okay.
I'm Priscilla DeBondo. I'm a planner for the town of Silver City, and I'll be presenting a slideshow.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. So this is VC 1701. It's 3305 Pinos Altos Road, an amendment to the official zoning map from commercial to residential A. The property is residential A on the west portion of the property, and it's commercial on the east portion of the property. It's currently used for residence, which makes it nonconforming as commercial. The owner elects to rezone the whole property to residential A to assist in the sale of the property. The highway commercial district is meant to be used for a wide range of commercial uses. Higher-density residential building and mixed-use buildings that do not front the highway are more suitable for this district. And single-family detached, including multi-section manufactured homes, are not allowed in commercial highway districts. The residential A single-family district is intended to accommodate low-density and medium-density single-family, and through conditional use approval, two-family residential development, and to provide land use protection for areas that develop in such a manner. So, 7.1.2 Nonconformities Out of the Land Use Code says, "Any structure lawfully existing on the effective date of this land use code or subsequent amendments to it that is constructed contrary to the regulations of the land use code shall be deemed to be nonconforming structure and may continue to be used, and the right to use the structure shall run with the land, subject to the provisions of this article." And here is a zoning map showing the property. As you can see, the west side of the property is residential A, and the east side is a commercial highway. Riding north and south, you can see Pinos Altos Road, and then east and west is 32nd Street. Here is a front view of the property. You can see that there's a residence there. There's a residential property that's connected on the north side. And then, fire station two is on the south border of the property. When the Planning and Zoning Commission makes its recommendation to the town council, and when the town council makes the final decision, they shall at a minimum make at least one of the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Three, the proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake on the town's comprehensive plan, an error in the assumptions about the properties, surrounding uses, population forecasts, rate of land consumption, or other factors. Four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. Five, the proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use, or further studies that have been completed since adoption of the land use code. Six, the proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or local legislation, federal legislation. Seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. It's the opinion of the Community Development Department that the zone change may be approved based on the following five principles. Number one, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. Number two, the proposed amendment will not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. Number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or general welfare, and will promote the original purpose of the land use code. Number five, the proposed amendment responds to change conditions such as changes in the assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, land committed to development, density, use of further studies that have been completed since the adoption of the land use code. And number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Does the council have any questions? Council Madison, first?
Thank you. Could you inform us of what the findings, facts, and decision was by the Planning and Zoning Committee? Because that's what's written in the ordinance, is what the Planning and Zoning Committee decision was.
Our findings were the same as...
The opinion?
The opinion, yes. Those were the same as the Planning and Zoning Commission. They agreed with one, two, four, five, and seven. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see no one else has been sworn in. Is that right, Ms. Mackey? So there won't be any opposition spoken. Is that right, Mr. Scavron? So we can proceed now to the voter. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This land is in Council of Madison's district, I think, right? Will you be making a motion, Council Madison? Okay.
I do have a question from Mr. Scavron before I hit it. Mr. Scavron, do I need to reference the Planning and Zoning Commission, or can I just, it's within the ordinance? Or do you need me to state those findings?
You don't need to state findings. It's in the record, but you can, your motion can be to adopt the findings
Of the planning and zoning.
And recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor? I move to approve an ordinance number 1258, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for several tracts of land from a commercial district to the residential A single-family RA district, described as a 4.343 acre tract of land being situated in the southeast one-fourth, southeast one-quarter, section 26, township 17 South, range 14 West, NMPM, Grant County, New Mexico. A map of the area is attached as appendix A. The applicant is Turkey Creek LLC, adopting the findings and recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission in their entirety. And the property is addressed as 3305 Pinos Altos Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council Ray. Is there any more discussion from the council? We have a motion, as read into the record by Council Madison. Roll call, please, Ann.
Council Madison?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Let the record show that it was affirmative and the yes for all councils. Next item on the agenda requiring action of new business. Item 11A, under new business, is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2017-15, Participation in Local Government Road Fund Program administered by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Brown, will you be?
This resolution authorizes the town to participate in the local government road fund program. Basically, it's, the nickname for it is the co-op program. Just to give you a little bit of history on this program, when I first started, the town used to apply for this grant, and we, the grant portion of the, of the grant, the grant portion of the funding was in the range between $250,000 and $300,000. And look at what the maximum funding is these days. We're talking about $32,000. We used to do some pretty big projects with it. But over the last four years, we've been using it for chip seal projects, and that is what we're applying for, is to do a chip seal project on the western side of Swan Street, in that area. And all the streets are listed in the resolution. So what, this August, we will be doing our chip seal project that was, the co-op project that was awarded to us from last year. That will be done in August of this year, and then we will be doing the fog seal in September. This funding, if awarded, will be used in August of next year, and we will do the fog seal in the following year. The gas tax, the road maintenance fund, is going to be the source of the matching funds for the project. Remember, the road maintenance fund is funded by gas tax and a portion of gross receipts taxes that the town council designated to that fund. So we have about $400,000 that goes into that fund each year, and so we're designating about $11,000 of that in next fiscal year, not fiscal 18 that we are going to be coming up on now. It will be in fiscal 2019. So with that, if you have any questions?
No questions. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Madison?
I move to approve of Resolution number 2017-15, Participation in Local Government Road Fund Program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Ray. Is there any discussion? Are there any questions or comments from the general public? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Ann.
Madison?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Unanimous in the affirmative? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the library board. We received an application from David Kirsch to continue serving on the library board for another three-year term. His current term expires on June 30 of this year. The Chair of the Library Board, Ted Lynn, recommends Mr. Kirsch's appointment. If there are no objections from the council, I would like to reappoint him. Any objections? Then I so appoint him. Item C is the appointment to the Recycling Advisory Committee. We received an application from Denise Smith to serve on the Recycling Advisory Committee. The Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee, Mr. Terry Timms, recommended Ms. Smith's appointment. If there are no objections from the council, I would like to appoint her to this committee. No objections, so I appoint her to serve on the Recycling Advisory Committee. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.